Thank you, Kathy. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raised hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. We reached a point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council. You can click that button to be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pleasure of each of you. Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tuley.
Here.
Councillor Selly.
Here.
Councillor Powers.
Here.
Councillor Scampelli.
Here.
Councillor Stevenson.
Here.
Councillor Tebow.
Here.
Councillor Trim.
Here.
Corn present.
We do not have any presentations tonight and we do not have any public hearings tonight. So that brings us to personal appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you'll have five minutes.
Okay. Hold on. Let's see if I can go first.
No, no, no.
Okay. Fine. Hello, everyone. I think to get into some splash pad discussion tonight, I wasn't here at the last meeting, nor did I speak, but I heard what was said and I don't really believe that the public's kind of being misled. I think some of you at this have been misled, especially when your opinions are that to spend an extra $284,000 on a closed-loop system, the one that keeps your circulating its own water, you just think that that's maybe not an equitable decision. It absolutely is and it's very common knowledge. It's blatantly obvious and I'm going to talk to you as by right now. The last meeting Fonda said he didn't want to crunch the numbers because of the effort or the time. It took me about 10 minutes to crunch these numbers. None of yous wanted to talk anything about the water coming into the splash pad. It was all about the water going to the waste treatment plant on a daily basis, which is a whole other entire cost in itself and it's probably a lot more insignificant, but we're getting into the part of the water arriving at the splash pad. Here in the city, if Google is right, if you have a metered commercial property, which is if someone wanted to build a splash pad for a business, you'd be paying $5.20 per 1,000 gallons of water. So the numbers, I figured it would cost just over $300 per day for the amount of water that would be going through that or through the splash pad, which would equal close to $27 per year if it was open 90 days like the city pool is. Some of us said it was a drop in the bucket, this, that, and the cost of the pumps. If you do some very simple research, even just ask Google on your phone or an app, it is very common knowledge that a closed-loop system or one that recirculates the water and uses chlorine is a drastic amount in savings on its yearly operating costs. The cost's about $5,000 or $6,000 a year to operate more of those, or that's from the research I've done. Honestly, with the shape of the citizens right now, I would think it's a good idea anyways. It'd be nice to have it. We have a pool, we're about to get all these upgrades for the pool, it's going to be stable out. We got a very good pool at OFA and another citizen had recommended me realizing that pool this summer, just to get us through the year, and I think that's a really good idea, to be honest with you. And maybe we should wait until we do have the extra funds or can find it to put a splash pad in that makes sense and isn't going to cost the taxpayers more money than the water on. And it was also noted that, as we already stated, that we're not going to charge ourselves for our own water. We would charge the businessman if they wanted to put one of them in or anybody else. And here we are pushing the daycare providers around for two years now and we have the audacity to suggest putting in something like that that's going to dump that drinking water, not the water, the drinking water right down the drain on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sayad Ahmed. I live at 413 Canton Street. As you know, that building, it has three parts, main garage and what used to be an animal wet clinic. As you can see, it's changed drastically. I've done a lot of renovation, new roof, new building, et cetera. Renovation is still going on and it has uplifted the image of Canton Street, but I'm still waiting for a decision whether Canton Street lights will be enhanced or not. Its Canton Street lights are still dimly lit. It does not reflect a vibrant city. And as I requested last time, Highway 37 needs to be lit if you want to attract people and they have a better image of Augsburg. My question is, is the city pursuing this idea of eliminating Highway 37 right from the prison all the way to Vanview Hotel or something? I think it is very, very important to eliminate this highway. And the next is my request. According to the City of Augsburg website, the first tree branches lifting and all this they occur in month of May. And I think month of May is too early because it is still very cold and we as the president have not yet started to cut the branches and do the painting, et cetera. My request to the council is that that date, we move 30 days advance, make it June rather than May. By that time, people have started to cut the branches, this and that. So this is my request. Is it possible to move the date from May 38 to June 38 when people get more chance to work with their trees and branches? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raised hand feature. City clerk will recognize them, mute one person at a time and you will have five minutes.
The first individual is registered as Arlene Kaya and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Mrs. Kaya, it appears you are self-muted. It appears that she has now lowered her hand now.
Okay.
Nope, her hand is back. The first individual is registered as Arlene Kaya and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Arlene Kaya, home daycare provider. Yes, last meeting, the mayor brought up about home-based businesses again. Why? After two years, need to figure it out, getting really old. The council can override the city manager. Council is supposed to be there for the taxpayers. Going down this road again, why? This was in effect in 1975, 50 years ago. Been going on for two years. I missed the first year, thank God. Second year has been a joke. 13 businesses got, but now we got two in August, one in September and one in October. So total of 17 businesses now in a year. I'm sure if everyone took five minutes, you could come up with more than home-based businesses than 17 in a year. Joke. Like I said before, council members and city managers sat in on making the change in decision. City manager's paying, but he's done good for himself this year. I have to ask, how many council members have received a letter? Because we know some have home-based businesses out of their homes, too. Can't use the saying about a desk anymore. Some businesses you have got have a desk, but others in the city have the same businesses, but you only got certain ones. Why? We have four people working in codes and all four are from Augsburg, but we haven't done very well getting jobs, home-based businesses. So stop this. You are picking and choosing and yes, discrimination is happening and your affidavits are a joke. You can lie on them and nothing is done. Does codes know what commercial means and residential means? I wonder, see, in a residential place should be commercial, but he's still paying residential and codes was looking into this in April of 2025 and nothing done. I'm sure they will use more than three or four eight-ounce bottles of water a day, but some parents do bring spring water to us, thank you. Also, not sure if you know it, but daycare has come to an end for parents through Canton. Building underwater in sewer, why? There is nothing in the definition about water in sewer. You guys are right back where you started two years ago. People say move on, but you can't when council can't get it together at all. So we will not be going anywhere. Yes, I wish I knew that the city lawyer was at the last meeting. I would have loved to ask him some questions. Bring it up, but then you don't do nothing. Address it in 2027, really? That's taking care of business, but maybe it's time that we finish what we started that a council member told us to do. Sorry, we tried to work with council. We've asked for a meeting, but we got nowhere. City has no money, stop spending money and giving raises. The raises to some people, then you have to hire a firm to do what he had to get paid a raise for. Sad he earned it and says he earned it. I think he needs to give back and stop taking from us taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Arlene.
(inaudible).
I do not see any other hands raised, mayor.
You have an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting if you choose.
Well, I'm speaking right now.
It's inappropriate for you to speak right now, so.
(inaudible).
I'll ask you to stop, please, or I'll rest, recess to read the U.
At this point, I declare recess and as management, we have the order to the chamber.
(inaudible). Do not allow counsel, can't honor over two years this has been going on. Shit.
That brings us to correspondence. Where are the correspondence this evening?
We do not, ma'am.
Next, we have our consent agenda, that the claims is enumerated in general fund warrant number 22-2025, the amount of $794,531.69. And liability warrant 22-2025 and the amount of $0. And capital fund warrant in the amount of $51,923.33. And community development fund warrant number 22-2025, the amount of $12.25. And community removal fund warrant number 22-2025, the amount of $0. As amended, being here, sent hereby, ordered paid, I shall move.
Second.
Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tuley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scampelli.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Tebow.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight. That brings us to our Mr. Counsel. Actually, our first item of business will be read by city manager Fonda Cronus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution to adopt the 2026 preliminary budget as amended.
I'll move that.
Second.
I'll offer some preliminary comments. The resolution details the revisions to the preliminary budget that was accepted by city council. It reduces overall expenses in the general fund by $96,808, with the two major areas of reduction being a reduction in the transfer to reserve from $50,000 to zero and a reduction of the heat, light and power in various accounts in the amount of $30,000. As well, the appropriate fund balance is increasing from $250,000 to $270,000. This allows for a reduction in the property tax levy to what was originally proposed by $116,808. And so that brings the tax rate for 2026 to be $15.17 per thousand as compared to $15.69 in 2025. So it's a decrease of 52 cents per 1,000 assessed. For a household with value to assess at $100,000, there would be a $52 reduction in property tax. Water and sewer combined are up for single residential $123. So the net increase would be $71, which in total would be an increase of about 2.8%, which I think is within current inflation numbers in the country. So I'll just make those observations to start and then turn it over to council for other comments or questions.
I'd just like to say, this is a bare bones budget. This is more of a bare bones budget than we were presented. I want to thank Fonda and I want to thank council and I want to thank our department heads, Angela. It's tough and there's a lot of work to do to maintain this tight budget and I hope we're successful. I appreciate it and I got my full support here. So thank you.
I concur with Dan's statement with Fonda and you, mayor, as well as putting in homework and many of us here as well, along department heads. And a very much a bare bones budget and preparing for 2026 isn't going to be an easy task either, so, or 2027, I apologize, but yeah, good work.
Anyone else? And again, I'll echo the comments. Much appreciation to Fonda, city manager, and the department heads who worked many, many weeks slash months on developing a responsible budget. Again, bare bones, but a budget that maintains pretty much all city services, maintains staffing levels throughout, no job reduction, and moves toward rightsizing our water and sewer fund budgets. So I believe it is a very responsible spending plan. Again, much, much appreciation to management. With that, Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Stevenson. Yes. Councillor Tebow.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Mayor Tuley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scampelli.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city manager Fonda Cronus.
A resolution calling for a public hearing and public notice on a proposed ordinance to amend chapter 221 entitled zoning, section 221-8 entitled zoning map parcel number 59. Dot 031 dash 3 dash 13 dot 211 to be rezoned from the R2 Business District.
Someone could introduce that.
I'll move that. Second.
Any questions or comments?
What is the benefit of changing to a business district versus the density residential to the property owner?
To be a business, the property to be zoned business as opposed to MDR gives you additional business options on that property that you wouldn't be able to do on an MDR.
When we bring this back in two weeks, in one week, right? Next week?
Two weeks, ma'am.
It'll be the eighth.
It'll be the eighth. Okay, sorry, thank you. As part of the presentation following the public hearing, I'd like to have staff speak to the suggestions made by the county planning board, because I don't see a reference to that anywhere, agreeing with suggesting two other parcels be rezoned, and that we leave one section in that area as MDR. So I'd like to have, hear some comment about that, whether that's, any of those are under consideration besides what's being presented to us.
Sure, I'll share with you, mayor, that I asked the planning board about that and they did not recommend doing the other two. I do have a planning board meeting between now and the eighth and I'll ask again for some clarification.
Thank you. Just noticed, we'll head that down. Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Tebow.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Mayor Tuley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scampelli.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city manager Fonda Cronus.
A resolution to retain the appraisal services of George E. Sanzui P.E. LLC doing business as Sanzuzi Associates to provide evaluation for the hydroelectric facility in the city of Augsburg.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And Fonda, would you give an interview with this, with this action?
Sure. The company who is operating the hydroelectric facility has filed Article 7 against the appraisal of the improvements, the capital improvements on the property. The court has required the city to provide an appraisal, a professional third-party appraisal of that. The other side has to do the same thing and both will present appraisals and the court will utilize that information to make a decision on the assessment on that property.
And the resolution notes that the Augsburg City School District is expected to pay half of the cost of this retain. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Any questions or comments from council? Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Mayor Tuley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scampelli.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Tebow.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by public works director Shane Brown.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Lincoln Cities to lease purchase a plow wing combination.
I'll move that.
Second.
Give us an overview, Shane, of the need for this.
This is going to be a wing plow combination for that new dump truck you guys authorized to purchase about two months ago.
Okay.
Make it easier to follow.
Just to clarify, Shane, we are purchasing?
Yes, we are purchasing.
Purchasing in the quoted price $23,522.80?
Yeah.
That includes a 30 cent discount.
Yes.
So Shane, we haven't had a wing truck in a while, if I'm not mistaken. Most of our trucks are underbelly plows systems and.
Correct. Our wings, we have two wings that go on our loaders.
Okay.
Must be a lot smaller truck than a normal size.
That's what I was wondering, that's where I was getting at. And I think this is going to be a smaller truck for helping out in certain areas. You talked about this a number of years ago, right?
Yeah, it'd be a lot easier to push back quicker after a storm. Shouldn't push back as hard, hopefully.
Right. Certain neighborhoods and trouble spots and things like that.
Yes.
So, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, that's where we're finally getting at. So, thank you.
Shane, is this similar to the plow we looked at with Morristown a number of years ago? The smaller dump truck with the wing plow?
No, it's even smaller than that.
It's even smaller than that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Shane. Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tuley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scampelli.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Tebow.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by public works director Shane Brown.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a change order number one to the contract of Paris Escavation Patrols H for the Phase 2 Marina Improvement Projects.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
So if we have an overview, why these changes are needed?
Yeah, when we counted the slopes or with the engineers or when we designed the project, we couldn't see everyone that was bad. So as they pulled them out of the water, they found more slopes that were holding their own head holes in them.
And then questions, comments from council?
And just to clarify, we're still way under budget in terms of the grant money. It's been awarded and things like that, so.
Yes.
Good.
Any other questions? Thank you, Shane. Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scampelli.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Tebow.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Mayor Tuley.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by public works director Shane Brown.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept 2026 youth development program grants.
I'll move that.
Second.
And again, the resolution notes one grant's $2,400 and the other $5,050 for youth development programs in the city. Any questions, comments from council?
So I'm just wondering, what is their activity? What are they going to do?
They're going to expand the arts and crafts program. Last year, they started again, one day a week down at the business center. Now we're going to possibly one day a week down there and try to travel to a couple different locations in the city, make it easier for people to access it.
The other parks. Yes.
Excellent. Any other questions? Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scampelli.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Tebow.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Mayor Tuley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city controller Angela Gray.
This is a resolution calling for a public hearing on local law to amend chapter 177, sections 5 and 6 of the Augsburg Municipal Code entitled Sewer Rights.
I'll move that.
Second.
Questions or comments? Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Scampelli.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Tebow.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Mayor Tuley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city controller Angela Gray.
A resolution calling for a public hearing on a local law to amend chapter 215, sections 39, 40 and 41 of the Augsburg Municipal Code entitled Water Rates.
I'll move that.
Second.
Questions or comments? Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Councillor Tebow.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Mayor Tuley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yep.
Councillor Scampelli.
Yes.
Councillor Scampelli.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city assessor Michelle Delcots.
A resolution called, sorry, a resolution to call for a public hearing regarding the local law to amend chapter 199 of the OMC entitled Taxation.
I'll move that.
Second.
And well, this is a follow-up to the discussion from the presentation made a few weeks ago where the senior tax exemption, the go-to a sliding scale within household income eligibility of $26,400 or less. And it's been a long time since there's been any adjustment to this, to this benefit. So I'm sure I speak for council, we're certainly pleased to be moving this.
I did get several complaints, not only in the last year, but in years prior, and I brought those to Fonda and I really appreciate it. And some of those citizens contacted me today, they looked at the agenda and they're very happy about what's happening here. So just to pass that along, they're saying thank you, so.
Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Tebow.
Yes.
Councillor Trim.
Yes.
Mayor Tuley.
Yes.
Councillor Selly.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Scampelli.
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city assessor Michelle Delcots.
A resolution to call for a public hearing regarding the local law to amend chapter 199 of the OMC entitled Taxation by adding article 7 entitled Exemption for Persons with Disabilities and Limited Incomes.
I'll make that motion. A second.
Okay. And again, this is a follow-up to the presentation I referred to earlier. Okay. And again, this is a follow-up to the presentation I referred to earlier. This is a new benefit if it's adopted, which will provide a, a income exemption for individuals with disabilities who have a household income below eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scampally?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Tebow?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next little business will be read by City Manager Fonda Cronus.
A resolution declaring Augsburg's city council lead agency for Elsa and Lutzick Public Pool and Bath House Improvement Project and issue a negative declaration.
Second.
Uh, just some brief overview of this, Fonda, please.
Sure. This public project must go through secret processes. We have not heard back any negative comments or any other agency who wishes to be lead agent, so this resolution will declare the city council's lead agency for the secret process. And we've also done the environmental analysis and believe there'll be no negative environmental impacts by proceeding.
Okay. And in the introduction to the action requested, just note on paragraph one that it should reflect an addition of two splash pads, not three. Questions or comments from Council? Kathy, please call the roll.
Sorry, Mayor. Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scampally?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Tebow?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Approved.
That brings us to our business as I go ahead with our little business this evening.
Uh, not business, I guess, in terms of a resolution, could be items for discussion, but, uh, uh, as a matter of fact, it probably should be based on last week's meeting, but I just wanted to make sure, uh, that the heat is on in the Armory Building and, uh, the, the prison, Augsburg Prison. I know that the state promised to keep the heat on, at least in the prison, and, uh, to keep those buildings from being, uh, compromised, shall we say, during the, uh, during the winter months, the way we've seen many buildings get compromised without having to heat on. And I don't know if Council or City Manager has done a follow-up just to make sure this year or not, but I hope we did. We'll do a follow-up. Excellent. Thank you. It's all I have.
Any other non-business tonight?
OCAC is still heated.
Oh, is it? Good. Thank you, Mike.
That brings us to new businesses. I go ahead with new businesses this evening. Um, I'd like to bring up the, uh, topic of the email that, um, I received, uh, City Manager, as well as Deputy Mayor Scampally. Well, Professor Baldwin, Baldwin of SLU that deals with the eradication program for basic plants in the river. He will be supplying or preparing submitted grants to DEC to help fund activities in this program. He recommends consideration of possibly the purchase of a harvester to be shared among other municipalities and at the, at the estimated cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more. So I just wanted to introduce that. Uh, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Mayor Scampally for comment, and then allow for some comment or questions from Council.
Uh, yes, the water chestnut is the invasive species, and, uh, this is a plant. Uh, it started, we first noticed it around the Hamilton area, above the dam. And, uh, they've been using the, the harvester in that area, and honestly, I'm quite skeptical about the machine itself in terms of, I, I believe it gathers about, about ninety percent of, uh, of what they're trying to get, probably even more. But I think that quite often, if it loosens up some of the plant and it goes downstream, it creates more of a problem, and that's probably what's happened. And now it's in the St. Lawrence River. And because it's in the St. Lawrence River, uh, I think it should be a federal project. And I think if anything, uh, we should, we should ask the federal government as communities altogether, uh, along the St. Lawrence River, uh, maybe have a similar affirmation, asking for help. And, uh, I, I think they've developed a chemical uh, since the initial harvesting began that, uh, from what I understand, does a pretty good job of eradicating it. This plant, uh, has a adverse effect on spawning grounds for walleye and bass. And it definitely needs to be addressed. Uh, I, I, I think it's a terrible invasive species. It, it's almost an emergency. It's, it's at crisis stage in Hamilton, uh, Black Lake moving there quickly. And if we don't act on it, uh, our shoreline is going to be the same. And, and for years, of course, combined this with the puzzle of Augsburg and the North Country and their economic stability, uh, the fisheries are, are a, a good part of our, our future here in our recent past. As we all know, uh, even New York State says, uh, bass fishing alone in these tournaments bring in about a hundred and eighty million dollars a year along the St. Lawrence River. And here we are, sitting in the middle of it, we have this invasive species, uh, starting to develop right here in Augsburg. And it needs to be addressed. I think we should petition the federal government. My hats off to all of those, uh, clubs and, and local people who have dedicated their time to trying to, uh, pull the weeds, including, uh, Mr. Baldwin, uh, Brad, and, uh, and everything he's been doing on his own. But I think we need, need to seriously move this to the, to the federal level and ask for help from our senators and our Congress representatives. Because if this gets out of control, it, it's, it's going to be too far gone. So, those are my thoughts on it. There's, people can dispute them easily, probably, uh, in terms of the water chestnut getting downriver, but it's, it might be tough to dispute too. Uh, I, I think when they do it, they need to put up nets or some sort of system to stop it from happening. And that's why I propose, uh, the chemical solution. Uh, but yet it's still early in the stages of using those, and I'm not sure of the adverse effects on, uh, the fish population with that either, nor, nor any other population, so.
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah. Uh, it's, it's so early. They've been using it. Uh, the DEC has approved it. So, well, they're pretty soon, as we know, and, uh, but it's, it's a complicated issue. And, uh, I'm not sure a simple harvester between local communities is, is the answer. I think it, it, it's going to be more than that, much more than that. Well, maybe, uh, staff could put together some sort of a resolution petitioning the federal government for some help, uh, including an investigation and what they think, working with the DEC. So, that's all I got, Mike.
Thank you.
You bet.
Questions or comments from Council?
It's a comment. Uh, Dan and I have talked about this at length, and Dan's been a true advocate for, uh, trying to eradicate these water chestnuts, and I think the federal level is the way to go. Unfortunately, what we've come back is testing studies and this, that, and the other thing, but ultimately, at the end of the day, if we could, if we could secure that funding and not only for Wattington, Messina, but even heading up into the Asmati and, uh, the, and the Black Lake area, which, which is pretty heavy as well, from what I understand. And, um, I think it'd be, I think anybody'd be hard pressed to dispute any of the things that, uh, that you mentioned in the seriousness of this nature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Do, do we know if the other communities are on board with, with working together?
I sent an email to the, the, um, Professor Baldwin sent emails to the mayors of Messina and Wattington. Great Bank, where Mayor Messina indicated that, um, they wouldn't be involved since they have no riverfront property with the village proper, that it'd be the town of Messina. So, um, so we have no responses yet from the town of Messina, who hasn't been notified quite, or, uh, the village of Watting. Right. You know, there's other groups as well, uh, that may, private groups, Bassmasters, uh, world, world fishing, uh, Fish Cap, things like that. Uh, it, it wouldn't hurt to get their support on, uh, federal action either. So, and, uh, I know Don Meisner personally, and I should call him and run it by him. So, maybe I'll do that. See if he can round up for support for something like this. So.
Any other questions or comments?
These, uh, they are in the St. Lawrence Island, Camp Town Red Mill's, and I have evidence of the seeds, um, washing up on shore. So what they are, this plant is in the St. Lawrence. Um, I think they had a cleanup, uh, by the state hospital this summer at one point.
Last summer, yes.
Yep. Um, so it's, they're there. Uh, I'm not a fan of chemicals, but maybe a combination. I think we need to look more into that. The cost, the, uh, effects of the chemical. But again, I do agree, when you start chopping up plants, you can't catch every little piece, and it's going to spread. That's all.
Yeah. So I, I would, I would support the suggestion from Deputy Mayor Scampally that we look at some sort of resolution support of, uh, approaching the federal government for, uh, support in, uh, the, the eradication program. I'll continue to express support and appreciation for the work Professor Baldwin's done for many years with the teams he's put together as well. Any other new business? That brings us to items for discussion. Does anyone have any items for discussion this evening? Brings us to citizen participation at this time, if anyone attending in person. Would like to address Council, please come down to the podium, and you will have two minutes. Uh, before moving on, as we've heard, we backed items for discussion. Perhaps at a future meeting, again, depending on priorities, we could have just some press, a presentation from Mayor in regards to try to answer some of the questions about lighting in the city or Canton Street area and or Route 37 corridor. Gentlemen's requested, uh, answers to those questions. I mean, I think they're reasonable questions to, to proceed to obtain information about. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address Council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize them one person at a time. You will have to.
The first individual is registered as Tanya Snyder, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, I just have a question. The way I understood it at the last city council meeting, council stated that underneath the revised budget, that the tax rate would be fifteen oh three, under option two. Tonight, you stated that the tax rate would be fifteen point one seven. Could someone explain why the rate changed? That's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Any other?
The next individual is registered as Greg McNamara, and I will unmute that individual now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, uh, I would just like to call in. You know, I just, I just heard Mayor Tully suggest that we look into this issue with the lighting on, uh, Canton Street and Route 37, Route 37, excuse me. What, you want to talk about a waste of time, colossal waste of time? And someone just needs to tell this fella, this guy who comes from out of town. I believe his name is Side. I forget. I did some work for him, and he never paid me. But at any rate, at any rate, listen, I'm, this is my time, and I'm talking. Thank you. At any rate, uh, Route 37 has nothing to do with the city of Augsburg. It's not in the city of Augsburg, and that would be all controlled by the DOT in New York State. As well as, uh, the whole ordeal with Canton Street that he brought up. The first time he ever brought this up, several meetings ago, he was asking you guys to kind of go against what National Grid describes as what, what they need to light up. Because National Grid's involved in this too. Now, here we are, the city of Augsburg, broke. We have all these issues going on. You guys, you guys couldn't run, you guys run the city and the finances here like a drunk college kid with their parents' credit card, from what I've seen. Now we're going to open a can of worms with National Grid, right? Yeah, that's a real good idea. I bet we'd win that one too. Let's just be real and just tell this guy, it's going to be dark in front of your house, just because you came here and bought a house and put a roof on it and fixed it up. I mean, he was up there kind of patting himself all over the back and stuff, like he's going to save the city. Is he for real? Just be real with the guy. Just be real with him. Yeah, okay. You hate everything I have to say. Peace.
I cannot see any other hands raised, Mayor.
We have a resolution now to adjourn, adjourn to executive session, which I will introduce. Where City Manager Fonda Cronus requesting executive session members of Rapid City Council to discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. And where as New York State Open Meetings Office, City Council to adjourn to executive session for such purpose. Now therefore be it resolved that City Council adjourn to executive session to discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. And be it further resolved that any action resulting from this executive session shall be taken in open session. I saw news. Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scampally?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Tebow?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Approved.
And would you not anticipate any action following executive session? So I'll make a motion to adjourn from executive session. Second. I will pay for it.
Bye.
So meeting adjourned following executive session.
No staff tomorrow.